This is on. There we go. Welcome, everybody. Would you please join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here for the board meeting. Can I get roll call for the Monday, April 28, 2025, school board?
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Here.
Ms. Liskini.
Here.
Ms. Martindale.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Bosso.
Here. Moving on, adoption of the agenda. Recommend that the Board of Education approve the agenda for the Monday, April 28, 2025, school board meeting.
So moved.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get any additions or subtractions to that, which there is? We're going to add a letter of condolences to our personnel to that. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. Moving on, approval of the minutes from the April 14, 2025, school board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved, Liskini.
Thank you, Ms. Liskini. Second, please.
Second, D'Angelo Steele.
Thank you so much. Any additions or corrections to that? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. Moving on now, we're going to move into some presentations, and the first will be presented by Dr. Jamie Lesher for Staff Appreciation Week.
Good evening, President Bosso, Vice President D'Angelo Steele, Mr. Banks, Mr. Garside, members of the board. As I've said before, it is not bricks and mortar that make a school. It is the people. So it is my distinct privilege to present to you tonight the Declaration of Staff Appreciation Week for the week of May 5 through 9, 2025. The Southwestern City Schools Board of Education and District Administration recognize the vital role that educators, professional support staff, and administrators play in shaping the future for our students. Their collective dedication, passion, and hard work help students grow, learn, and achieve their goals. Certificated, classified, and administrative staff serve as mentors, role models, and motivators, inspiring students to explore new ideas and reach their full potential. Their impact extends beyond the classroom, leaving an invaluable impression long after students have moved on. Our staff open doors to endless possibilities and opportunities every day within our learning community, whether it be through the instruction of students, ensuring safe transport, providing nourishment, maintaining facilities, or any number of professional roles that our staff play. Our staff is truly the family that nurtures and supports the most important focus of our work: our students. With more than 1,900 teachers and 800 support staff professionals serving approximately 21,000 students and their families, Southwestern City Schools values the commitment and unwavering resolve of its employees and the essential role they play in education. Thus, let it be then resolved, and in recognition of their dedication, the Southwestern City School District Board of Education proclaims May 5 through 9, 2025 as Staff Appreciation Week. We encourage the community to join us in celebrating and thanking our teachers and professional staff for their hard work in providing a safe, supportive, and enriching learning environment for all students.
Thank you so much, and to all the staff that's here this evening, thank you, guys, so much for being here and supporting the kids in the district. Moving on now, we'll have the next presentation. It will be School Spotlight with Jackson Middle School Principal, Dan Boland.
Good evening, everybody. President Bosso, Vice President D'Angelo Steele, board members Martindale, Liskini, and Peterson, Mr. Banks, Mr. Garside, thank you so much for having me here. I'm Dan Boland. I'm the principal at Jackson Middle School. I am honored to be here this evening to spotlight the amazing work being done by the students and staff at Jackson Middle School. Thank you for this opportunity to allow me to be here to share these accomplishments. I've thoroughly enjoyed watching these all year long on the YouTube channel for all the schools, so it's fun that I get the chance to brag about our school now, too, so I appreciate the opportunity to do this. Our first highlight, we will talk about our academics first, and we'll just mainly highlight our school report card. We're very excited and proud of the work that we've done at Jackson Middle School. We have four and a half out of five stars on the state report card, and in each of the three areas of rating, academic achievement, growth, and still closing gaps, we've earned four out of five stars. I'm particularly proud of that growth and that gap closing metric. When I started focusing on this five, six, seven, however long years ago, when we would look at the gaps and the closings, we had a lot of work to do. So the work that the staff has really put into how to intervene with students, how to use the school day, and work with students individually, we're seeing the fruits of that labor. We're seeing that those stars come up. There's still work to do. We don't like seeing an empty star up there, but we're still working on that, and so that we're very proud of that. And then on top of that, with that, and I think it goes along with this, a third of our students are involved in academic acceleration or enrichment of some sort, whether it be in language arts or in math. So we see a lot of that, a lot of that growth even just in the classes that they're taking, and then when the gap closing and the growth, we'll see that in all of our classes, so we're very excited to see that. Going on to community engagement and student recognition, this has been a focus of ours specifically this year, trying to make sure that we are recognizing students for the great work that they're doing and engaging in the community. So we've done things, a couple of the examples, we did a Cards for Hospitalized Kids drive in January through our homerooms where we delivered, I want to say it was over 300 cards to kids in hospitals right after the holidays. It wasn't designed for the holidays, but just kind of a pick-me-up. It got an amazing thank-you letter from that organization afterwards, really appreciating what we've done. We have done food drives, we've done scavenger hunts. We've kind of made it a tradition, the night that we light the Christmas tree downtown Grove City, we will invite our families to do a scavenger hunt to different things downtown, just to kind of get people out and do something in the community and see their teachers doing something fun. So that's a fun example. And then what we've really tried to do with our parents is to have them opportunity to see their students in action. One of our favorite things so far this year is the circuit showcase. Our seventh grade science teachers all put on a showcase opportunity to, students created a room, a scene, and a shoebox, and then used what they learned in science about currents and circuitry, and how to turn on lights, and what types of lights to put on, so they lit up their box. So we combined that with a parent-teacher conference night, had a large number of parents come through and see their kids work, so that's been a lot of fun. So whether it's that, seeing the kids do that, or the holiday concerts that we have, like I said, we've got, a third of our students are also in some sort of band, or choir, or orchestra, so seeing the students in their element, doing those things, we're really proud of. And then most recently, just on Thursday, we had our first annual, and I wasn't calling it first annual until after Thursday, but our first annual Health and Wellness Fair. Our PTA put that on in partnership with Walmart, and we weren't sure exactly what to expect, and we had 200 families come in, 50 or 40 vendors or so from the community of how they provide health and wellness opportunities in our neighborhoods, giving out health screenings. We kind of tied a little bit of an introduction to Jackson as well for any sixth-grade families coming in, what to expect over these next few weeks about what types of classes they can take, and so had a really good turnout for that. So it was very exciting, and it's just kind of good to connect families with what's available in the Grove City area. And then our final focus I have on here is the phrase that's kind of been almost a laughing stock now at Jackson, because I say it so often, is that we can do hard things. At Jackson, we roar, and we've said that for years. What roar means is that we're respectful, we're optimistic, we're accountable, and resilient. Resilient is hard, so the kids understand what respectful is. We know we're supposed to follow the rules. We know we're supposed to turn things in. It's really kind of become a focus this year to teach what does it mean to be resilient, and that's kind of where the phrase "we can do hard things" came from. So in our homerooms, once a week, all year long, we've really spent some time teaching what it means to be resilient, and what types of things you can build around yourself and make yourself resilient. So from Bluey episodes, where kids are learning, watching a Bluey episode about how to ride a bike, or from learning things about building connections and finding a purpose or asking for help, we've really kind of focused on these things throughout the year at different times. So it's really helped. We have focused on attendance specifically this year. There's two things that we can, we're very proud of, and we've been recognizing students throughout the years on our slideshows that are in our cafeteria and our hallways, but we've dropped our chronic absenteeism by 3.7% from this time last year to this time this year. We're really proud of that, and we've also seen a drop of 4.6% in our unexcused absences, trying to make sure the kids, we know where they are when they're not there, and seeing that drop. And we've been honoring that just by showing who's got perfect attendance, who's improving in attendance, just seeing their names up on the screen. And it's funny that all a kid really needs is to see their name, "Ooh, there's my name", and they're very excited to do that. So it's a fun thing, and then the, so we've talked about a hard thing that we can accomplish, we can do hard things sometimes, is just showing up. And so that's the idea behind the attendance, and just my last brag, we had our testing going on for state testing here these last couple of weeks. We actually accomplished 100% of our seventh graders were there, took the tests, and did what they were needing to do, and we were at 99.5% in eighth grade, and we knew exactly the reasons why those .5 didn't take it, just because of life happenesses. So we were very excited about how that's gone, so I think that watching this turn into an effective absence program has kind of worked for us. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions. That just highlights a couple of things, but we appreciate the opportunity.
I do.
Yes.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for all that you do. These numbers are amazing. I'm wondering if you could just expand a little bit on what specifics you're doing to get, you said you've been there seven years, and you're now at four and a half stars. What, can you give some specifics that your school is doing to get these numbers up?
So I think specifically, one of the areas in those gap closings that we would find a lot of special education students, we've got it built into the schedule where our intervention specialists have a rotation and a way to poll students specifically every week about what is it that they need, what is it that they need to work on. We'll see that work happening in our homeroom period, where, so we'll, instead of doing whatever homework assignments going on, they're getting individual attention or small group attention from their intervention specialist. Then also kind of in that homeroom period, teachers will find, "Ooh, I need to pull a small group of students to kind of fill in some gaps in this area as well." So we figured out a rotation of how can we cover another teacher to be able to pull a small group of students. I've got three or four teachers available to cover other teachers while they pull those groups, and so we think that individual attention has really, really helped over these last few years.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, but thank you so much for being here. I love that we're hearing from different schools every single month, and thank you for being this month. It's really good.
We appreciate it. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thanks for what you're doing, Dan.
Thank you.
Moving on now to another presentation with Board of Education Goal Update with Evan DeBeau.
Good evening. President Bosso, Vice President D'Angelo Steele, members of the board, Mr. Banks and Mr. Garside. Tonight, I have the honor of giving technically two presentations, a brief one followed by a more substantial one in a second. The first of which is our inaugural night for the Board of Education Goal Update for members of the community and staff with us today, building upon our priority dimensions developed by the Board of Education at the February Board Visioning Session. Tonight's topic will be customer interaction and communication engagement. And then my second, again, a brief presentation immediately to follow this, will be the unveiling of our new district branding, which has been a long time in the works here. So again, these updates, community members, will happen quarterly on the different topics, and I'll have a slide up here in a second. Meredith, can you go to Slide 2? I think you're actually at the end. I duplicate the slides. That's on me, sorry. I start and end, you always start and end with the same thing. Yep, number two. All right. So we are focusing tonight on the community engagement and district communication piece here, so, but again, just a reminder and a refresher from our February Visioning Session, these are the board visioning dimensions developed as board priorities that we will be reporting on quarterly as we move forward. So as we move on, Meredith, if you could go to the next slide. Thank you very much. So improving customer interactions, how are we creating a culture of uniform experiences for parents and community members? Obviously, being a district as large as we are, 2,800 staff members, 21,000 moving parts in terms of the continuity care for kids, there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of variable, there's a lot of personal discretion at times. So first and foremost, we'll get into, this is again just teasing what's coming on the visual side, we're working hard right now on the updated brand guidelines. So what does that look like every time we reference our school district? First reference, second reference? What are we doing for all the different many acronyms that only education and the military seem to have, that are confusing to parents, those kinds of things? Obviously, there's opportunities for us to continue to grow and continue to impact, you know, who we communicate with, how we convey those messages, and by what medium we convey them. The next piece I'm really excited about, we have our new data administrator with us, Rachel Kelly over there. Rachel, if you can wave hi over there. Rachel, Rob Moore in our IT department, and myself have been working on something for staff for onboarding materials for the fall called the Customer Experience Playbook. So the goal is very simple, let's draw up some winning and consistent plays to try to convey predictable responses, welcoming experiences, and supportive measures to all our stakeholders. What that might look like, sample phone and voicemail greetings, right? So we have some consistency there for, you know, if there's a big level problem or just a level reassurance, what are we doing to convey, even if it's just reassuring responses at the time of, "Hey, that's a great question. I want to dig into that a little bit for you. Can I have an administrator call you back? Is there a little bit more you can tell me?" All those different things, whittled down to email correspondence. We want to try to draw up, again, winning plays kind of with a sports mentality there. Those of you know me, big sports guy, so we're going to try to weave it in in communication how we can. Next slide, please. So again, and then the digital interfacing enhancement. So last Friday, families might have noticed, we've released from the IT department with some collaboration with Communication and Information, kind of inventory for our technology and our school's parent survey. So what we're looking for that again is, let's survey our base, our stakeholders, our customers, more or less. Let's find out, truly get into the core of what their experiences are, how many clicks to get to a center of a Tootsie Pop, those kinds of things, times how many apps you have for academics, and how many apps you have for extracurriculars. So we've really spent kind of the last two years trying to weave some of that back in, particularly on the sports pieces, so a lot of families have now got into SportsU. It's a great mechanism to communicate with coaches and to get, you know, team updates when, you know, uniforms are going to be turned back in, all those things. But the goal of this survey is really to kind of just take a baseline of addressing, again, what is our responsiveness to reassuring families, getting back to them in a timely manner, and what can we do to try to ease some of those technology bugs to ensure kind of continuity of care for, caring for their child? So that is something that, again, that we're hopeful to report at our next meeting, back some of the findings of that on our next update. Next slide, Meredith? All right, so now, I've just kind of laid the land. We're going to transition over to the fun stuff now, so this is, this is all fun, I should say. All right. Slideshow? All right, so since I was originally hired here, I came in in December of 2021 with this grand idea of, maybe for the first time in nearly seven decades, let's take a look at how we represent ourselves in terms of insignia, trademark, and branding. So I wholeheartedly needed three, every bit of three years to get a feel for how each building and each neighborhood and each community, you know, rallies around, you know, each one of our schools to get a good feel of the footprint, of the culture, and then kind of where the district umbrella plays into that, right? Meredith, if you could? So the opportunity for a district logo refresh really gives us a forum to provide unity across our district, right? So there's so many external barriers that go on outside of our 33 schools that we can't control, but we can control the perceptions and the continuity of care and practice from educational standpoint in terms of equity in our different buildings across, whether you're in Galloway, whether you're in Grove City, Franklin Township, what have you, is really there's an opportunity here for unity through our branding project. And then we'll get into a second, I'll show you some visuals of some comparable districts, but a needed aesthetic update, right? So our logo is kind of quite dated, you know, again, we've done some deep dives with some stakeholders who've long been vested in this community, you know, raised, and some of them have, you know, Dr. Dawn Lordson, who went to elementary school here, and now she's taught 30-some years, she has seen it, you know, come to fruition in her entire experience here. And then addressing local needs as well, too, there's an opportunity here for some of the branding. So a common conversation, again, we have at job fairs, "Where are you located?" Yeah, I've heard of Grove City, but what other, what other high school feeder patterns do you have? All that comes into play when we're going out trying to recruit the best of the best, retain, and trying to make a name for ourselves in being a destination district. So we tried to come at it with that lens, and then from there, again, just wanted to show you comparable, right? I mean, I don't, I don't think it, I have to, you know, belabor this a lot. If you look around at our comparables around, you know, central Ohio, some of them go down to Cincinnati with Indian Hill, one of these is not like the other, right? So again, when it comes to small stuff, anybody looking to apply and work at our district, they are going to our social media feeds, our website for the first time, you know, and if, there's all kinds of studies, if it looks like it's kind of dated, it might unintentionally have that dated feel that we don't want to convey, because we know there's so much opportunity here from a professionalism standpoint, a career trajectory standpoint, an opportunity to impact kids to scale. So again, just wanted to kind of give that comparable from where we're starting with and kind of starting to tease where we're going. Meredith, next? So obviously, you can't do this kind of work and engage as many stakeholders as necessary without kind of having a community steering committee. So that committee met starting back to, or dating back to October of last year, we engaged a graphic design firm to kind of help us from a visual standpoint, but as you can see from the photo in the room here, we had a number of stakeholders across the board, from members of SWAS, we, OPSI, our district PTA, our Ed Foundation, city township representation, athletics representation, and parent reps from each one of our high schools. A number of them weren't able to make it today, but I just wanted to quickly name those folks who were part of that committee. So Central Crossing, Christine Thompson, John Ware from Grove City High School, Franklin Heights, Metta Swisher. If there's anybody who knows more about Franklin Heights, I'd be hard pressed to find somebody who's not Metta Swisher, because she knows it forward and backwards if you know Metta. From Westland, Jessica Murphy from the Career Academy, Tamika Livingston from our Education Foundation, Jill Billman Royer, who's ran a number of levees, you know, in the past for us over the last 20-some years, Miki Young from the Council of PTAs, Amanda DeCastro with Community Relations in Grove City Parks, James Jewell from Prairie Township on the West Side, and then Dr. Lordson was a part of our team, Jay Damaso from an interactive media design standpoint here in the Career Academy, does this work daily with kids. And then our district athletics rep was Christian Meister. So I'm very appreciative for the three or four nights that those folks put in to kind of, you know, convey all of their different lenses to look at this and kind of look at opportunities, and we kind of looked at, you know, where could we grow with this? How can we kind of refresh things but still honor each succinct high school feeder pattern? And then that brings us to tonight. So tonight, we kind of have a big reveal on the next slide, and then the rest of the week is going to be a sprint for my office. So working at what I call big-ticket district assets for Phase 1, looking at, we've got a number of letterhead items that we need to get out to buildings and secretaries tomorrow so we can start transitioning. You'll see a website and social media change over first thing in the morning. You will additionally see, you know, our brand family start to take on some of our logos and assets as we contact, again, the Ed Foundation, PTA, Chamber of Commerce, communities and schools, list goes on and on, news media. So every time you see the district now in its new interface, you will recognize it with our new branding push. Updating vendor tiles, and then Phase 2 is really looking at the long-term district assets. So we've got 18,000 forms for as large of a district as we are for an array of different needs. We'll continue to work with third-party vendors for digital tiles, additional print assets. We'll be working on hiring recruiting flyers, and then fixed assets over time. So by all means, we're not going out and chiseling out the logo that we're kind of sunsetting a little bit out front of every elementary school, I know, but, you know, over time, what we can impact on a cost-efficient level is things such as spirit wear, helmet stickers, mats, some signage we can create in-house at our print shop for pennies on the dollars, so. Meredith? All right, so a couple of things, I want to set the stage. So we went through a whole list with our community group of things that just quite were not us. So we experienced, you know, we kind of went through and looked at a shield concept, right? Shield presents unity, think of the NFL, you think of NBA, right, that, you know, you got your individual teams, but you kind of come together. Ultimately, our committee felt that that was not us. Number two, we looked at kind of this compass concept. So Southwest, obviously, playing on the directional component, kind of looking into some of the Olympics colors of maybe trying to weave in all of our high school color patterns. Ultimately, there was kind of a good contingent that felt still not us. That gets us to exploration number three of this infinite possibilities for student achievement piece. So one more slide, Meredith? Matt, can you go ahead and set the stage, and we'll go to the lights and go to the movie theater setting? It's a big reveal. First time in seven decades we've touched this. We've got to, so Meredith, before you click play, I just want to kind of set the stage. So our hope was this was, we could come up with anything, right? We could, we could walk around and put up a bunch of new signage, we can say, "Hey, this is us now," but we truly wanted to capture this through the eyes of it being in use across all four feeder patterns. So again, convey the experiences that we know exist in our schools. Those of you who've been with us for a long time, you organically know each feeder system is unique, but still honoring the goal of the collective when it comes to unity. So Meredith, go ahead. Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Meredith. So anytime you engage in work like that, right, I mean, you're going to uncover a number of sacred cows. So again, putting together that think tank was so critical to make sure we had the voices heard from across our district to end up on something like that. So I want to kind of deconstruct it real quick to point out some intended symbolism. So if you look at the SW mark, we have a five-pointed badge that reflects the four high school feeder patterns, and the fifth high school career pathway being the Southwestern Career Academy. I will get to a couple of variations, you saw that in the video here in a second to unpack, but that's the first intentional symbolistic piece we put in there. Obviously, you have the top half of the S, the bottom half of the W. You have that vertical infinity loop playing on the endless opportunity tagline there. Also doubles as a merit badge as an exceptional educational standard. And then if we go to the top right, you've got obviously the triangle point southwest, the S and W again play on the infinite possibilities piece, and then the mouth of the W, Meredith, you might be able to click, and I think it might, if you just click anywhere, yep. So obviously, where do you find a star on a map in a legend, right? It's in the state capitol, so that is a subtle base part of the star there so that when we're on the recruiting trail, we can say, "We're found right here in Franklin County." So those are kind of the intentional symbolism pieces conveyed within it. And then Meredith, you transition. So you can see it on some sample branding that you'll see out of my office in terms of digital and print production as well, too. And here's where, here's where things really get cool, right? So again, you heard me say this a little bit earlier about honoring the distinct heritage of each individual high school pathway. So how do we do that? Again, we will use this judiciously and sparingly, but obviously, taking on the colors of each individual building just made sense here. So that was presented to us, and it was an opportunity, again, to kind of convey a district lens of, hey, we're all, you know, under the southwestern piece, but again, honoring exactly how the Greyhound's Greyhound, how the Cougar's Cougar, and how the, you know, Franklin Heights and Southwestern Career Academy and Comets all rally around together to support each individual neighborhood communities that we serve. So you will see this in some district branding when there's a district event at one of these schools. Also, again, you saw in the video, right, the little helmet sticker on the back of the lacrosse helmet. Those will come in those colors as well, too, so, I mean, you think about all the opportunities when a football coach, a softball coach is in the dispatch and getting a photo on the sideline, you know, on the side of a headset, or, you know, some of the gear that they're seeing, again, promotes unity for a larger scale. Some other transitions, if any of you have received a form from us, it's a little dated. They are also copier killers in terms of Mr. Garside. They are also copier killers in terms of Mr. Garside's budget with that big black bar at the top. So we hear that from IT as well, too. So we thought there's a way to infuse color but maximizing some more space. So we, I just want to give an example of what some of our new district letterhead looks like. So you obviously have the endless opportunity, infinite possibility at the bottom. So that's kind of going to be our departmental district and pre-K through eight templates. And then Meredith, you transition. Obviously, then it takes on the colors where you still get the SW piece and you know firmly it's the green and black from Westland High School as well. Another example, again, of just using imagery from the great work that Meredith does and Katie and my department as well of capturing those authentic moments in our district while again infusing where we're at. So we let off here with Dr. Lushers and the Board of Education's proclamation. So I have a homework assignment for everybody in the crowd. So I will set up in the back these little thank you cards because obviously, again, we can, we can throw a logo up, we can make it look nice in a video or, you know, some other kind of setting and stuff, but it's the authentic experiences that we as a collective create that really champion a brand, right? So what better opportunity than staff appreciation week next week to divvy these out and pass them out. So if there's a bus driver, there's a cook, there's a maintenance employee, there's a staff member, there's an educator in your life that's of sincere importance to you, just as we saw with our school bell campaign, we highly encourage you to take one of these home or two or three, fill them out and make their way to a building or a department at your discretion next week. So that's a lot to unpack. Again, I recognize the first time you go into any of this work, it's, it's something that truly hasn't really been done in seven decades. The other two things I neglected to point out, Meredith, can you leave there for a second? So we had a, a lot of internal debate about dropping the, with the community, or the community committee, the hyphen from southwestern that obviously, again, is, is shared with, you know, our, our Career Academy, with our PTA, with, you know, the Ed Foundation, with SWA, a number of different entities, right? But ultimately, they thought that it kind of showed more from a unison standpoint to remove that and kind of play on the, you know, compound adjective versus proper noun piece, right? So southwestern can stand on its own as a proper noun. And then the other piece as well, too, is I know there was a huge kind of harp seven, eight years ago for we have to have district and everything. I mean, that's a mouthful when you're, you're championing, talking about all the great things for your district, when Matt Jordan and his team are out recruiting, when we're out, you know, interviewing folks and screening them and stuff to, you know, potentially join our family. Southwestern City School District's a long name. You will still see the D in district and email signatures. We're not changing all those staff, I promise. But again, two succinct items that I did not address, I want to make sure I, I brought forward here. So without all, leave it open for thoughts, questions.
I'll just say, great job.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, I love it. I love the paying homage to all the school colors and how it all looks so good. And I just, bravo. Good job.
We're, we're unique. I mean, I, you can feel that in every high school you walked in. When we, when we brought the design team, we walked every high school. And what was amazing to them was they took a lot of inventory of what was going on outside of the schools. I mean, just day-to-day traffic or what, what, you know, restaurants were in close proximity, you know, everything else. But we are the great equalizer across the board. So, and then there's a way to, again, to champion the identity of each individual high school. And again, how, how Grove City does things, how Westland does thing under a district brand. So again, that was our hope with that and very appreciative of your thoughts.
I will say when Evan released it to us, took my eyes a moment to focus and get used to it.
Change is different.
But I was excited about it, but I was like, man, this is going to take a moment. But, um, I, I love the look. I mean, I'm excited about the look. So it'll take your eyes a moment, but it'll get used to you.
It grows on him.
And we got new pens.
And we got new pens. Again, I've got the, the staff appreciation thank you cards in the back. Feel free as you exit to grab those off the high top and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Evan, so much.
Thank you, Evan.
Moving on now, we're going to go to items for action under fiscal and operational management with Mrs. Peterson.
So I think this is very interesting because one, I only have one item tonight. That don't happen too much there too often from the fiscal area and operations and facilities, but that might be a different story by the time we get to May next month. And it's piggybacking off of Evan, who was talking about Hugh and his copying and printer issues, I am actually bringing forth a recommendation that the Board of Education enter into a lease agreement with the Gordon Flesh Company for the district-wide copiers. This is the company that oversees our service and maintenance of the printers and copiers in the school district. So I bring forth this contract for this agreement to be renewed, and that is all we have. I make a motion.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second, please?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Was that who it was?
It was.
It was. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale?
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Liskini?
Yes.
Mr. Boso?
Uh, yes. Moving on now for items for action under personnel with Mrs. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. President. So for tonight's board meeting, we have nine personnel items involving six hundred and thirty-nine persons. This includes twelve certificated resignations, one administrative employment, three certified changes in employment, seventy-three certificated employments, fifty-seven of those are supplemental, six classified resignations, seven classified changes in employment, nine classified employments, sixteen non-renewal of long-term substitutes. And this is done every year to folks who have been in the same substitute teaching assignment for longer than sixty days. Five hundred and twelve resignations of certified substitutes. Again, this is done every year. We don't have a mass exit of substitute teachers, but they do this every year for all substitutes with any certification. They will need to come back to the board for approval the following year. And then I also have a message of condolences for a deceased staff member. And this is in regards to Kevin Oni. Mr. Oni began his employment in the Southwestern City School District on July twenty-second, two thousand and two, as a custodian at the North Franklin Elementary School. In two thousand and three, he moved to the position of head custodian at Westland High School and later Richard Avenue. He accepted a position as head custodian at Franklin Heights High School, beginning with the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven school year, and served in that position through the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. He currently served as the custodian at Pleasant View Middle School. In recognition of his dedication to the students in our district, a motion is in order by the Board of Education expressing deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Mr. Oni, who passed away on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. So after reviewing all of these items and again expressing deep condolences to the family of Kevin Oni, I move these items for passage.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Roll call.
Ms. Martindale?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Liskini?
Yes.
Mr. Boso?
Uh, yes. I'm going to invite Matt Jordan up here. We got some exciting announcements. Matt?
Thank you, President Boso, Vice President D'Angelo Steele, members of the board, Mr. Frank Garside. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce two of our new principals coming down to southwestern this year. And coming to southwestern, it's exciting to say that people are coming to southwestern city schools to work on our buildings and, and join our team. I'll start off by talking about Mr. Todd Poole, who will be our new principal of Bolton Crossing Elementary School. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Todd Poole as our new principal. He comes to us from Kent City Schools, where he has served as the principal of Holden Elementary School and Franklin Elementary School since two thousand and eight. He has also worked with Euclid City Schools, Ravenna City Schools as well. Mr. Poole is a bachelor of science in elementary education, master education administration at the University of Akron. Don't say anything, Dr. Lush. With extensive experience in elementary administration, we are confident Mr. Poole is the right leader to oversee our K-4 Lightning Bolt starting this fall. Things that excited us, obviously about Todd was his experience and he's worked in this type of environment basically his whole career, whether it's from Kent, Ravenna, Euclid, to work with these type of families and students to bring forward good academic success. His experiences enhancing student engagement, aligning instructional practices that yield positive academic gains stood out to us during the interviewing process. I'm very excited to introduce Mr. Todd Poole and I'll come say a few words. Welcome, Todd.
Well, first of all, thank you for this opportunity. I'm excited about being here at southwestern city schools. And after seventeen years, I was looking for growth and I wasn't just going to jump at the first opportunity. And as I looked at the opening, I looked at southwestern city schools and I looked at Bolton Crossing, I was excited to come down here and join the staff and make a difference for the students and families. So I appreciate this opportunity and I look forward to working with everyone in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd like to introduce Ms. Madeline Zellner, our new principal for Richard Avenue Elementary School. Very excited to introduce her. She comes to us from Findlay City Schools, where she has served as the principal of Northview Primary School since two thousand and twenty-three. Prior to that, she was the assistant principal of Gusiero City Schools. She holds a bachelor of science in elementary education from Ohio University and a master education administration from the University of Findlay. Among many of Maddie's redeeming qualities, her leadership and experience with safety, T-SIP, PBIS oversight stood out to us in interview process. You'll notice her enthusiasm, her positive energy, and just this positive outlook that she has on life and obviously her career working with staff and students was a huge attraction for our team. Very excited to welcome her to the K-4 Roadrunners at Richard Avenue. Welcome, Maddie.
Thank you so much. I can't think of a better board meeting to be at than one where you're revan, branding. That's so exciting. It is with great enthusiasm that I introduce myself as the new principal at Richard Avenue Elementary. I'm entering my thirteenth year in education and over the course of my career, I've had the privilege of serving in two outstanding districts. And both districts have offered experiences that have helped shape my leadership style and commitment to fostering both academic and a supportive school culture. This summer, my family and I are excited to relocate to the area. My husband and I, along with our soon-to-be second grader and fourth grader, so I keep calling it the Zellner Family Adventure. Thank you so much for this opportunity and for believing in me. I'm excited for the work ahead and the bright future that we will continue to build together.
Thank you. You got to do good there, Madeline. That's where I graduated from. I graduated from Richard Avenue. I went to Richard Avenue. Don't disappoint me. Thank you so much. Next, we're going to participate, talk about participation in membership to board organizations. This is a conversation we had probably a month ago. We had some people wanting to get into other organizations. So I'm going to open up the floor to go on with more discussion on those board organizations. And if anybody wants to make a motion to join whichever organization they see fit, please do.
I can start. I'll start. I would like to join National School Board of Leadership Council. I'd like to join NSBLC. And they do how their membership works. It's individual and not as a whole board, so, which is fine. It'd be great if, you know, everybody joins, but the benefit's always there for everybody. So I'd like to join them. I make a motion to join NSBLC.
As far as membership for that, what was that?
I believe it is.
Fifteen hundred?
Yep, fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, just so everybody knows.
Fifteen hundred per person.
Per person. This is an organization also that I've taken part in and looked at different videos and talked to their leader and stuff. And I find it very informative, I'll say. So I don't know if anybody else has anything to say.
Is that fifteen hundred meaning per person, like per board member or?
Yes.
Okay, that's enough.
Any other discussion on that?
Yes, I didn't want to interrupt or jump in anybody. I have taken part in trainings with National School Board Leadership Council as well. I've also done trainings with SBAE. And I, I personally recommend being a part of their organization. It is free. They do offer seminars and different trainings that you can pay for and do individual things, but there, there is no membership fee. It is a national organization. And they just, you know, are focused on academic excellence. And I also take part in OSBCC. It's another organization. They offer a lot of trainings, helping with policy writing, legislative updates, and advocacy, different networking opportunities. They offer a lot of different things. So I, I personally take advantage of all three of those as well as OSBA. I haven't been as involved in OSBA, but I do, I do take part in, in their webinars and the Capitol Conference as well. So those are, those are my four recommendations.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else with any input?
My, well, I'm just going to piggyback off of the discussion from when we previously had it a month or so ago. I'm still going to continue to recommend OSBA. And again, that is because I have only been appointed into this position for two years. So I will not say that OSBA is not worthy of our involved, continuing involvement with them because I haven't been in long enough to be able to fully say that they're not providing something for us or not. So that is one reason why I will continue to advocate to recommend we continue a partnership with them. Also, I think there is some things that we could explore with them that maybe to see if they could help us out with different things that we have been working on and visioning and things. But I'm, I recommend OSBA to continue to be a partnership because I'm not going to say that I haven't been on, in a position long enough to discredit them.
Thank you.
Just to, just to mention that also, Mrs. Peterson, with OSBA, we do use the board docs through OSBA. And it's, it, the cost for that is about twenty-seven hundred dollars a year. So we do save roughly three hundred dollars by being a member. Our membership with them, I believe, is ninety-eight hundred for the year. But we do utilize their board docs, the Capitol Conference, of course. We do pay to attend that as well. So that is an additional fee. But they do a lot of members, they do have a lot of membership benefits as well.
So if, if we did, my question is, if the board does not continue with OSBA, what does it look like far as board docs? How, how is that?
We would just purchase it.
Implement it and put up. Can, I just want?
I reached out to them and they, they said that we could still purchase their platform and use their platform. So we wouldn't lose any data that we already have in it. We'd just pay a little bit more to join that service.
Okay.
Any other comments, sir? I guess we could run down each one of them and make a motion to be a part of those organizations and take separate votes on each of the organizations. So? Ms. D'Angelo Steele made the motion to be part of NSBA?
NSBLC.
LC, I'm sorry. Do we have a second on that?
Second, Liskini.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call?
Ms. D'Angelo Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Liskini?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Upstaying.
Mr. Boso?
Uh, yes. Moving on, now the other two organizations don't even cause to be involved with them. I would, I can, I guess, I'll make a motion to join both of those organizations, which would be the OSVCC and also, what was the other one?
SBAE.
SBAE. Can I get a second on that?
Second, D'Angelo Steele.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes, that's fine.
Mr. Boso.
Yes, thank you, sorry. All right, moving on now to OSBA. Would somebody like to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a second?
Second, Liskini.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
I'll abstain.
Mr. Boso.
Uh, no. So we will join all the organizations and hopefully get plenty of information out of them. Thank you.
And I hope that OSBA will come maybe to one of our meetings and have a conversation with us. I have some ideas going forward with them, too, maybe kind of spreading the involvement around the table a little bit more as opposed to last year. So just a recommendation, we can talk to you when they invite them over, maybe.
All right, thank you. Moving on now, we'll go to, we're going to go into executive session that is recommended to Board of Education adjourned for executive session according to policy 0166 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee to the conference with an attorney regarding pending or imminent court action, and to prepare for or conduct a review of negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees. Can I get a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. D'Angelo Steele. Roll call.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Boso.
Uh, yes. We do not expect anything after executive session for anybody that would like to stay. Don't forget about Evan back here with the thank you cards to show our appreciation for all our staff in our district. And thank you for everybody for being here. Have a good evening and drive safe, you guys.